The first item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda. And I understand that-
Are you doing that while we're being recorded?
Yes, we are. We're being both broadcast and recorded. Thank you. And I understand there's a proposed amendment to the minutes on the 23rd.
Yes. Under the section of liaison reports, I believe it's on page seven. And I just would, the one, two, third paragraph down. Ms. Escobedo attended the Emerson Umbrella Rubin Cutting Ceremony as well as Ed Day. She attended Planning Board at which the library received needed approvals with significant conditions before being sent to ZBA.
Okay.
Thank you.
For a second for that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I sent some edits Jeremy's way, assuming, okay, good.
Yeah, I did too.
So on the consent agenda, our town accountant's warrants, minutes approved for August 26th, September 9th, and the amended minutes from September 23rd. The approval of public ceremonies and celebrations committee calendar. Gift acceptances from the Aldrum Family Charitable Trust, $500 for the Hugh Cargill Trust. The Clemens Family, $30 from the Hugh Cargill Trust. For the Clemens Family, $25 to the Hugh Cargill Trust. From Tom and Evarts, $4,200 to the Cemetery Trees. Olive Avenue Productions LLC, $7,500 to the Visitor Center. One day special licenses, Acton Boxboro United Way, November 23rd from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. at 2:46 Old Roads and Nine Acre Corner. All alcohol beverages, Salt Box Farm on November 6th from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. at 40 Westford Road, wine and malt only. And Salt Box Farm, November 9th, 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. 40 Westford Road, wine and malt only.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is town manager's report. It's town managers.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the board. I'll be brief. This is something we noted. There's a, something kept me a little out of it. It's interesting to me anyway. So in the printed report, I did really just by reference include a number of pieces of information, one being the documents related to the Nagog Pond litigation, which is, you know, we did prevail on. And I think the decision, the way the decision was crafted, it was a, it was a very solid win. I think the decision really reflected the arguments made by the town's attorneys. So I want to commend the town's attorneys and CPW, the director, Rich Rain, who really kind of led the effort, as well as other town staff who were involved in that litigation. Having the town's water rights in Nagog Pond preserved, as the decision put it, forever is really a huge, huge win for the community. I think, nevertheless, I still think we have an opportunity to work with Littleton and Acton on the future. And we're always going to be neighbors and we're all always going to need water. So I look forward to kind of getting to know those communities and talking about the future of Nagog, kind of collaboratively. I also included, just for information purposes, this FY19 library statistics. The library's really focused on teen programs to get more teens in the library. And you can see the results of those efforts have really increased visitation and circulation. I, they look, the statistics look great. And obviously, they paint the picture of a very vibrant department, not only the Free Public Library, but also the Fowler Branch are both heavily used. I did also, just for your information, submit to you the town manager's response to the Finance Committee's Guidelines document. We presented that a couple of weeks ago. And I just wanted to give you that information as kind of a precursor to the budget. We also, this is just early on, I already talked to several people about affordable housing. And I was trying to get my hands around how many different things are out there for affordable housing. And I'd heard a number of different things get mentioned, not only in Vision Concord, but talking about bylaw changes and funding sources that are available. And I asked Liz Russ if there was kind of one-page summary to kind of put it all there so I could understand it. And she had actually developed that quite a while ago. And I had been kind of sitting on it. And I thought, geez, this is really good. I should share it with the board. So. And then just from this morning's SMT meeting, Baker Avenue was paved over the weekend to avoid the disruption that would have happened had we tried to pave it during the week. A new batch of LED streetlights will be, have been ordered, will be shipped soon. And so over the next few months, actually, next two months, because it has to be done by the end of the year, you'll be seeing crews out there going gangbusters hopefully to convert and install the new LED fixtures. And I'm also told that we've upgraded the holiday lighting for downtown and for West Concord. So make it very festive.
Terrific. Well, I hope, with respect to the Nagog litigation, I hope you will, on behalf of the board, also extend our thanks and gratitude to not only our legal staff, Rich Allen, all of the folks who participated. That was a very complicated, important, complicated legal matter. And they did a really thorough job. So-
I agree.
Quite appreciated.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments or questions for the town manager?
I would just underscore that, having been, being one of the select board members who were involved in that discuss, all of the discussions, the amount of patience and real professionalism that was shown across the board by our team, just made me proud of the way we handle business and the way we think forward.
Mm-hmm.
Because this is really a proactively based effort.
I agree. That's good.
All right. No further questions? All right. The next item on our agenda is the statement regarding the Estherbrook Road litigation. So you were sent a copy of that for, is there any additional comments or? All right. Then I would entertain a motion. So the purpose of the motion is to approve this statement and then to be able to send this statement to the Concord Journal.
I move to accept the statement as presented or as amended and authorize the chair to read the statement and submit the statement to the Concord Journal. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda are the chair's remarks. And so I will begin by reading, if I might, the statement that we just approved and will be submitted to the Concord Journal. "On Tuesday, October 15th, 2019, the Select Board voted unanimously to significantly limit the scope of the ongoing litigation regarding Estherbrook Road by directing Town Council not to pursue one of the town's claims. The Board took this action in an effort to minimize both rising litigation costs and the burden on the individuals who are not parties to the litigation. The Board will continue to pursue its claims of public access to Estherbrook Road based on historic documentation and expert opinion that demonstrates the legal status of the road. Throughout this process, the Select Board's only goal has been to secure the public's right to enter upon and walk along the portions of Estherbrook Road that runs through Estherbrook Woods, subject to rules to protect these important resources, an objective recommendation by the Estherbrook Woods Study Access Committee in November of 2016. Until now, the litigation has largely involved the exchange of historical documents and the preparation of expert reports concerning the legal status of Estherbrook Road before 1932, when the currently unpaved portion of the road was discontinued by the county. That discontinuance relieved the town of its obligation to maintain that portion of the road as a public way open to all travel, including vehicles, but did not surrender the public's right to access the road. The town believes that these historical records, its experts' analyses, and the legal effect of the discontinuance all demonstrate that the public has continued to retain the right to access Estherbrook Road, including the unpaved portion through the Estherbrook Woods or recreational uses that are consistent with the preservation of the woods. The town has made another claim, that even if the historical records do not establish the public's right of access, the public nevertheless has gained that right through the continuous and unimpeded use of Estherbrook Road following the 1932 discontinuance. The Select Board has chosen not to pursue this claim, which would be based on the deposition of dozens of individuals, mostly town residents, who regularly have used the unpaved road through Estherbrook Woods, as well as depositions of former landowners or their family members. We are not pursuing this legitimate claim to spare the community and those who would be deposed the expense and burden of this additional process. We have been asked many times why we pursued legal action against our fellow Concordians. The simple answer is that the Select Board reasonably believed that the town was facing impending legal action that would have threatened the public's access to Estherbrook Road. The Board and Town Council believed at that time that attempts to resolve the dispute had been unsuccessful, and it was in the town's interest to promptly seek a judicial resolution. With the benefit of hindsight, the Board acknowledges that the reasons for this approach were not communicated clearly, which has created concern in the community. Additionally, while it was a legal requirement to name all the abutters to the disputed portion of the Estherbrook Road in the lawsuit, the Board regrets that not all of the abutters were aware of this situation prior to the commencement of legal action. Throughout the debate over and process of litigation, the Board has acted only in the interest of protecting public rights on behalf of Concord residents now and for all time. While much of the Board's deliberations about the lawsuit happened during the executive session, a provision of the law that protects the confidentiality and communication with Town Council, at no time did the Select Board act without careful consideration. By taking this action to limit the scope of the litigation, the Board is showing that we have heard the community's concern while continuing our obligation to protect a public right. It is in our sincere hope this matter will be resolved, be resolved by judicial action or mutual agreement as soon as possible. And I will submit this tomorrow to the Concord Journal on behalf of the Select Board. I have two additional remarks. One, just a congratulations to the Concord players. I was able to attend their 100th birthday party last night at 51 Walden Street. It was a very nice event. And a congratulations to them. And their season opens with the play Funny Girl. I believe it's on November 8th. So it was a very nice event. And finally, tomorrow, Linda and I will be going to the State House where we will be participating in a joint Revenue Committee hearing on our home rule petition with respect to property transfer tax. Linda has worked very hard to create a document which she will read tomorrow. And I've given a copy of that to each of the members of the board. And I will see that it's posted on our town website tomorrow. So that ends my comments. The next item on the agenda is review of the Board Committee and Task Force Appointment Policy, APP 10. And as I mentioned to you, in your packet, you had a clean copy of the amended, proposed amendment to it. And, but I would like to walk you through the changes. For the audience's information, this, this procedure and policy was called to our attention for the reason of trying to understand better two, two facts or two issues. One, could a citizen in the town be a member of two committees? And the second was, can a citizen of another town, a resident of another town, be on a committee in our town? And we wanted to review this policy to make sure that we still believe this was the way it should be, as stated in the policy. The policy says very clearly that committees in town should be populated by residents of the town. And it says also that members of the community should not serve on more than one committee. But the policy goes on to make exceptions to those rules if, in fact, we don't have someone in our town that can fulfill an important component of a committee, or if we believe somebody has such unique skills and/or experience that their participation on a second committee would be in the best interest of the town. So I reviewed this policy and provided the updates that you saw. In reviewing this carefully, I think those two particular issues were well addressed by this particular policy. They make it clear what we should do and also make it clear that if it's in the best interest of the town, we could have somebody serve on two committees, or we could have somebody from outside, particularly Germaine, when we began the work on the Economic Vitality Committee, when there are a number of people who are property owners or managers of businesses in town that were not town residents. So you have before you the amended policies. The major change was simply to change selectmen to select boards. So that was about 30 or 40 different times. But if I can turn your attention to the first substantive change is on page 56 of the policy. There, this was in the second paragraph below the list of activities. It just has to do with, we'll make appointments in accordance from Massachusetts Equal Rights Amendment, which would states in part that equality in their law will not be denied because of race creed or whatever. But it, it had a parenthetical statement about sexual orientation. So this amendment just lists it along with race, religion, color as one of the things that you may not discriminate upon. The substantive changes that, that was substantive, but it was already covered in there. But the substantive change, I draw your attention to the bottom of page 57. Under eligibility of appointment. And essentially, what it says is that elected officials cannot serve on any other committee except ad hoc and temporary kinds of committees. And we recently have not been adhering to that. But the way we have not been adhering to it and what this proposed amendment reflects is, for I'll take myself as an example, I am the chair of the Financial Audit Advisory Committee. And this amendment allows that by not appointing me to that particular committee, but when the committee charge requires a member of the Select Board or the School Committee or whomever would be elected to serve. So I couldn't be put on another committee, just as Mike Lawson, but as a selectman written into the charge, I could. So that, the amendment essentially says elected officials cannot do this except they may serve on temporary ad hoc committees. And additionally, elected municipal officials may serve on a committee where their office is specified as a member by the committee charge.
And this is important because I think a lot of us serve as liaisons to many committees. And I think that's often confusing.
No.
As liaison, we're there to bear witness and report and then, and then bring the information back to the Select Board and the public, but not as a voting member.
Not as a voting member.
Yeah.
And so this amendment, or this, the clean copy that we'll be voting on has that statement in it. And then, on page 58, under role of, role of committee and appointments, and then the subsection, selection procedures, there is a statement that reads, "A notice will be prepared for release to the-" This has to do with if there's a vacancy on a committee. What do you do about it? How do you go about finding somebody? And it says, "A notice will be prepared for release to the press and for public posting pursuant to the 1996 town meeting vote under Article 12." So posting is one thing, but releasing to the press, I'm not sure we have faithfully done that. So I guess this isn't an amendment. That's going to stay in there. But it's a reminder that we will try to make sure that we do that. Right?
And what type of posting have we been doing, if any?
We'll post committee vacancies on the town website.
Like on the homepage or on the page of the committee or?
No, I think it should go on the selectmen and, selectmans and town managers, because you go under the appointing authority. So under the town manager and under the Select Board, there would be listings of it.
Okay.
And-
But this would be a posting to news and notices and the Concord Journal.
Oh, news and notices.
The press.
The press, a more public posting.
Yeah, yeah, good.
My only concern with that is that if it, we can send out a release, but doesn't mean no.
Don't do anything about it.
It may put a little blurb in saying, but it may not. And I just want to make sure we're not, you know, suggesting we should do advertising, like take like a classified ad or something.
No, we're not doing that. But I think the other thing we could do, we send out a release, which that's what this says. But what we can also do in news and notices is we can, on a monthly basis, I don't think it needs to be more often than that, simply have a notice. We have the following vacancies on committees.
Yeah, that's great. That's really good.
Stuff like that.
So you're suggesting in addition to posting on the town managers and the selectboards?
I think the vacancies should be listed on the town managers and the Select Board sites.
And then, once a month on that?
And then monthly, we would just have our public information officer have a news alert that says the following committees have vacancies, if police fell out a green card.
You need to put something on a, like a banner ad, so to speak, on the website saying, click here for information about board committee appointments and it can take you to the proper appointing authority picture.
So I think even if this wasn't in here, we should be doing a little bit more proactively to get folks involved. So, so other than the substantive, other than the substantive change, which has to do with allowing elected municipal officials to serve on committees if the charge of the committee so designates a sexual orientation addition, changing selectmen to Select Board, those are the changes. And those are all reflected in your clean copy. So questions or comments or?
Thank you.
So I have two comments I'd like to make. On page, well, under eligibility for appointment, E, number three, just, you, you just pointed out that it's been amended with that additional comment, additionally elected municipal officials may serve on a committee, et cetera. I'm wondering, I'm looking at number two above that and wondering if, it, it's limited there eligible for ad hoc committees, the town manager, Concord Public School, and CCRHS administrators? Do we have this, do we have a similar situation there that needs that amendment?
That's not, that's not a standing committee. That's an ad hoc committee. They have a job to do and they're reporting back to us. I think we're okay with respect to what we've done. And I think you're asking, should we take the amendment that we put in Article Three and also make that an amendment for number two?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm suggesting, yeah.
What do you all think?
So this would be functionally making, giving selected staff a voting authority on different committees, if they were appointed.
It would, but it would be, again, as number three states, if I'm understanding Linda, it would be only when a committee charge says the town manager has to be on it.
Right, no, I, right.
Like a building, like a middle school building committee or feasibility, but yes.
I guess my question was simply, have we ever done, not that I don't think our staff and town manager and school staff aren't more than capable, but have we ever done that, other than for residents of the town who happen to be?
Not that, no, I've been, and frankly, I, I think the way it is is probably right. I don't think we would want the town manager or the school superintendent on a standing committee, certainly not a regulatory committee, right? But a committee that, you know, has a job to do and then is gone is sort of an ad hoc committee.
Or task force, yeah, I-
Like the capital planning committee.
Right.
It's going to report back and then it's going to be out of business or the feasibility.
Right. But that committee is tasked with figuring out a process. And they might come back with, okay, here's the process. There's going to be a standing committee. And the standing committee might have to have the superintendent or, or the town manager or other designated on, on there. I, I have no idea, you know, what that committee will report. But that's the model that they have used in other towns. So it's possible it could come up. Also, your example of the middle school, you, that's an ad hoc committee?
Well, it's ad hoc, I don't know what really ad hoc means.
Right.
But it's a term committee. It, it doesn't go on like Natural Resources Commission or the Select Board or-
Right.
Planning. It doesn't go on.
It's longer than a six-month task force, but it's not a permanent committee, yeah.
It's, on the middle school building committee, that's modeled after an MSBA building committee. And MSBA prescribes who is on a school building committee. And the town manager or mayor or something like that is on there, on there by virtue of the office. So I think that the middle school building committee took the same structure. So, you know, I think, in fact, I think the town manager was appointed to that committee before I was even appointed to town manager. So.
Right.
But in terms of what you're talking about, if like the capital planning committee, if we get through that process and recommendations, we should have a standing committee that reviews this. And the town manager and others should be on that committee, then the language that Linda was suggesting we duplicate-
Right.
-in that section would probably be a good addition.
Right. So I think for the maximal flexibility, I think it wouldn't hurt to put in what Linda's suggesting, because each committee that comes up in the future that might have this is going to have discussion about its charge and who, which members would be on it. So it's not like we're making any policy, we're just opening the flexibility by adding it in now.
Other comments? Well, my comment is, okay, but I think we should be very careful not, just has to do with town manager, I don't want to be a student, town manager or selectman. I don't think we should expect or encourage that as committees come along, that, and we say, oh, you have to have a selectman or, or you have to have a town manager. I don't, I don't think that's a good idea, because town managers are very influential and selectors probably somewhat occasionally, every other Tuesday in an, you know, odd year. But it, you know, it's very different.
Right. It has to be done carefully, right.
And so I think I can support that amendment for number two. But I would hope that as we go down the road and have committees coming for us, that we are very careful about deciding that a selectman or a school committee member or the town manager, whatever's on it.
I totally agree, totally.
Citizen, those are citizen committees.
Well, and I, and I guess that, in that way, I was also reading this to be more, number two, to be more focused on staff, on those people from the town manager to this, to the, to the superintendent of schools, to the senior department heads. And that's also a, I can see where, you know, that's, most of our meetings are at night. I mean, it just, it's a lot to, to burden staff.
Yeah. Well, I don't, yeah, I don't think we should be doing a lot of it. But there's occasion for, for school, the school feasibility to be in compliance with MSBA or capital planning where it's really the town manager and the school superintendent have responsibility for developing capital budgets.
Right, yep.
That's appropriate. So then Linda, Linda's gonna, Linda, you want to read, I-
So I'm suggesting that, yeah.
amend that and that.
So I'm suggesting that we amend number two with the language that you've previously provided for another item. Additionally- Additionally, elected municipal officials may serve on a committee where their office is specified as a member by the committee charge.
I think you would wanna say, you don't wanna put elected municipal officials, but municipal officials.
Correct, correct, thank you.
School superintendent is not elected.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
All right, and so, is there a second?
Second.
And this is on the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do you have a second?
The second is, the second comment I wanted to make is, under the section of residency, section G residency, it's on the next page after what we just talked about. It's both a reminder to myself, but I wanted a little discussion on this 'cause I think there's lack of clarity on this in terms of how we actually act on this item. In the event a committee member becomes a resident of another community, the member or the committee chair shall promptly notify the appointing authority. The appointing authority may, upon the request of the committee chair, permit the non-resident member to continue to serve until the subsequent, let's see if I've read the right one, sorry. Yeah, till the subsequent May thirty-one, except in the case of statutory and regulatory committees. But I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I'm not, I think.
So, if somebody moves out of town from the planning committee, they have to resign. But if somebody's on the Economic Vitality Committee, the chair of that could request that that person remain until the following end of town meeting sort of date.
Right. And can someone remind me where this section is in terms of when committee appointments start?
I think it says May thirty-first.
Says May thirty-first or town meeting, whichever is later, I think is what it says.
Right, and there's also a lot of confusion around that. So, for example, when do we expect new select board members to start? Yeah.
Well, you usually vote at the end of town meeting, right, the former?
Well, they're elected in March.
In March, right, but they are official after the following town meetings.
At the close of town?
At the close of the town meeting, yes.
Right, or May thirty-first.
Or May thirty-first.
Whichever.
But actually, it's not whichever is later, like this year it was in April.
Exactly.
Because whichever was earlier.
Earlier, yeah.
I didn't read it, I was just remembering it.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're right, there was a lot of confusion about that.
So, do we wanna do something about it?
Well, I'm using that as an example because I think you, in practice, I think we have people assume, you know, the first meeting after town meeting has concluded, as opposed to the later date?
Yes.
So, I think leaving it as it is, but getting a note out and to all the committee chairs, informing them of that, is that what you're suggesting?
I found it, it's on page fifty-six, number thirteen.
Thank you.
So, this just says when the term ends, but I guess that's the same as when the new person starts. So, for example, there was some-
It's the whichever later is later is the, it's confusing.
Should be whichever is earlier.
Right, that's what I'm-
No, no, no.
Well, for, let me give you an example.
It's at the end of the month, following
Town meeting.
Town meeting, or May thirty-first.
But this year, as new select board members, we started April twenty-second or some, something like that was our first meeting.
And I wonder if those are statutory appointments, as opposed to whomever serving on a planning board? I mean, you're elect, that's an elected official, there might be a formal term, I don't know, I'm sorry to say. And I don't think we should do anything, I think we should check.
Yeah.
I think we should check and get that straight, and we need to come back. So, right now, May thirty-first is in fact the end of the month following town meeting.
Right.
And so, people's terms would expire on May thirty-first, and since we almost always have our town meeting, at least since I've been here, in April, May thirty-first is-
But in practice, that hasn't happened.
Right.
Be when people's terms expire.
Right, so, for example, I was on the Community Preservation Committee, and when I became a select board member, I think it was confusing for that committee between April twenty-second and May thirty-first, because I didn't serve anymore on the CPC, but they were missing a person. It was just confusing, and it probably should be looked up and clarified.
So, who's gonna volunteer to do that?
I'll look into it if you want.
So, we'll, we'll come back if we need to with some kind of change in number thirteen, term of office, and pay particular attention to not only committees like that, but committees that are done by statute.
Right, are there statutory requirements for May thirty-first, is that why that's in there? That's the question.
And, you know, and in practice, I recall that you immediately did follow-up work, some important follow-up steps from town meeting at the very next meeting.
Yeah.
And you could say that the seated select board before town meeting has the history there to work through those immediate steps you take. Or you could also, you know, take the position that incoming select board members would benefit from being on board with the follow-up steps immediately. So, again, I'm just using this board as one, just one example.
You prohibit them from coming to the meetings, I, your idea, or your thought that it was often right after town meeting, a bunch of stuff that has to get done to sort of deal with warrant articles that were passed. It would be good to have the continuing select board deal with it. It'll probably be much more efficient than having new folks come on and go, what?
But it might not be finished in a month. For example, we're, you know, sometimes you have a year's worth of work to follow up, right?
And I'm thinking last, I'm thinking particularly the affordable housing.
Right, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Warrant articles, we had to get into the state.
Right.
We need to get those wrapped up pretty fast.
But you're testifying tomorrow, I mean, it's still-
No, but getting it into the state.
Yeah.
Not getting it passed.
No, I know.
But, all right, well, let's look into that and see what we get. So, forgetting for the moment the issue that Terry's gonna help us resolve, do we have any more comments or concerns about this, you do?
Yeah, I just, under Article, Section K.
Section K, and you're on?
Fifty-nine.
Okay, yes, what is the issue?
It talks about town manager removal for town manager-appointed committees, and it says for cause. I would just add, it says cause shall include, I'll just add the words for example, between include and-
I'm sorry, you, I apologize, the town manager, he did raise that with me and I didn't get it in here.
Okay.
So, I apologize, I meant to do that. So, so, say again.
Sentence would read, cause shall include, comma, for example, comma, the repeated failure to attend committee meetings, you know, ethical violations, stuff like that. It's very limited the way it's worded right now. And I think the example, Linda, you just mentioned, say somebody moves out of town and doesn't notify the chair and keeps coming to meetings in violation of the terms.
Right.
And it's a town manager appointee, there's no basis. But that is a violation and disruptive to the work, or the confidence in government, you know what I mean?
Yep.
So, there's nothing kind of there and there, so, I would suggest that.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody okay with that? And I apologize again, you've already mentioned that, it just got by me. All right, so, with that additional change, then, I would entertain a motion.
So, you're ready to adopt?
That, are we?
Did we want clarification on the date for that?
I think we should adopt it, and then if we need to change the language, just come back and change it, it'll take us two seconds, but we can get the bulk of it done now.
Adopt as amended tonight, and then-
Amended tonight, we can be done with ninety-nine percent of it, if we have to. Terry might come back and say, no change necessary.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure. I move to approve the revised APP ten as amended.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the proposed home row petition to grant additional liquor licenses for the sale of wine and malt to be drunk on the premises. My goal for this tonight is not to approve this. First, we can have a discussion of it, maybe there, I think Linda's mentioned that she has something that she would like to add to it. What I'd like is a sense of the board that we would like to move forward with this as a warrant article. I have not yet heard back from the council, so we need to do that. So, if at the end of our discussion, we wanna move forward with this, I will do that and bring it back to you as a warrant article that you would then approve at a subsequent select board meeting. Is that process okay? All right.
Just to be clear, I think I know what we're talking about, we talked about this a little last week. When there's a long list of liquor licenses for the same location, different dates, we can do it in a more streamlined way.
Well, each town in the Commonwealth has granted liquor license, a number of liquor licenses. And we have very few left. I don't know the exact number, but one or two, I don't remember, but something like that. And there are a number of organizations in our town that even if they came forward requesting support for a liquor license, I don't think we would grant to them. I'd use the umbrella, I don't know if I really would or not, but the conversation is the umbrella might do thirty-five or forty events during a year, so. And we wouldn't wanna give up the last liquor license we have. We wanna hold that in reserve for, you know, a liquor store or a restaurant or something that's gonna be open three hundred and some odd days.
And economically based institution.
But the state allows you to petition the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission to get a little, particular kinds of additional licenses that are non-transferable, so that if X goes out of business and has one of these, the license isn't sold with the business, and it's meant to accommodate kinds of organizations like the umbrella, or like Barrow Farm, or like Salt Box, or like Fifty-One Wald, or like the museum, or like the library. They have a lot of events during the year for which you have to fill out a lot of paperwork, and this would just be economical, and the town has to do a lot of paperwork to get it all in shape.
Right.
So, it's those in-between kind of organizations.
Great.
I'd ask Jeremy, were you able to get the?
So, in the last page of the package, you should have some information regarding the alcohol piece.
Okay. Okay, so you can, you can sort of see a, a wine and malt club license, for example, is six hundred dollars, and a one-day special license is seventy-five. So, if you were doing, you know, a large number of those during the year, forty or fifty of those, it would be worth, worth your while to sort of do it. So, that's gonna be the financial break-even. Fifty-One Wald and I have no idea how many to do, but they can do the arithmetic and figure out whether getting a club license for all alcohol or wine and malt would be in their interest. Thank you, Jeremy.
I think it'd be good to know how many are unfilled, and how many excess licenses we have, 'cause-
My last recollection is we have one wine, one wine and malt and one or two full liquor licenses. And I know we're gonna be seeing an application for a wine and malt license sometime probably in the early spring of next year. So, you know, so that's what we're down to. If I'm wrong, Jeremy will correct us and we'll find that, but it was, it's that kind of number, down to one or two of them. So, this is simply an attempt at putting it together, and as I told you last time we talked, this is off with Mr. Macario, so looking at this for us. Linda had, I think, a very interesting and important observation, which I think would turn into an amendment here of some kind, or an addition, I'm not sure, so perhaps you go through that.
So, I suggested that perhaps this should not, establishments, organizations that currently have a liquor license would not be applicable for this process.
By that you mean a license to sell?
Right.
And wouldn't, we wouldn't want them on the license to pour and serve. This is meant for-
For liquor stores, so that they didn't also become a retailer or a bar.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, it doesn't, so.
Yeah. And the other, the other comment I'll make is that, now, having seen the fees, thank you for providing that information, you know, if, I think we only have one organization that's up in the thirty, forty-plus range, maybe, for requesting one-day license. And so, in that case, you know, there is some revenue loss, but when you match that against the incredible amount of time to process all these individually, I think that's, and I don't think we have a significant number of organizations in that category.
I think it'll be, I think it'll be a handful.
Right.
Right, yeah.
But there's only-
But I mean, who are requesting at that level, yeah.
But there, only one of them would be able to get this, right?
No, no, no. There's no restriction.
In this little handout, there's, there's no re, Boston, as I was told by the Alcohol and Beverage Control Commission, has like, I think they said, a hundred and eighty of these.
Okay.
They've requested a specific number, I think.
But you have to, in the, that's why you see in this handout XXX, right? Because you have to specify in there.
How many?
How many?
Not, no, you have to specify specific entities. So, it would have to say the umbrella or whatever, yeah.
Because it's non-transferable. So, one of the things I talked to Mike about, and this is kind of a getting to know town thing for me, we talk about a certain number and how many organizations we have, I guess, how would we figure that out? You know, are there organizations out there who would maybe, who don't go through the regular roll of the one day, but would maybe do this on an ongoing basis? I don't know the answer to that question, but I think it's, is there a way we wanna find out? Like, take a, take a, take an assessment of community, of community organizational interest in this?
We, Linda and I met briefly when we were talking today about the State House material that we were trying to prepare, about getting something in the journal about this, getting a little notice that we're thinking about doing this, it would be this kind of organization. If anybody's interested, please contact us to try to do that. And as I meet with people, I've met with Mr. Wedge at the umbrella, and I've met with Mr. Barrow at Barrow Farm, I've asked them who else might be a good candidate, good candidate for that. So, I'll be talking to the umbrella, Emerson Hospital, the library, Salt Box Kitchen, Fifty-One Wald, and those are the ones that, and every time I'll ask them, they might have somebody else in mind. And someone might not wanna do it, if you don't do very many of them, I mean, it's just not economically.
So, I can envision, perhaps, a corporate entity in town, you know, I'm thinking of the two larger ones in particular that have a cafe right now, that I'm not aware that they have liquor license or, you know, abilities to serve wine and malt, but they may want that opportunity, if they knew about it.
Well, they could certainly apply for a one-day license, I mean, not to stop them from doing that now.
But if they knew this was available, they might.
But again, it's how many are you gonna do? If you're only gonna do three, four, or five of these a year, it's not really worth it.
Right.
Maybe announce that we're in this process to, like, the chamber and the booths and roundtable, and kind of have them maybe get to where, 'cause I, I think-
Socialize it, right.
Yeah, I think the board is correct in that there's only gonna, it's gonna be a few people, a few organizations that want this, and you already know who they are, but that one that sneaks up and says, well, I'd have done it if I had known.
Well, but the other thing is, this is not a one-time event. If we get it in, it has to be approved by legislature, you can do it again. So, so, I- So, so I guess, are there any...
I had a question, Linda, you said you were, the first part of what you said was about an amendment.
So if an organization currently holds an alcohol license to sell, they would not be eligible for this?
Right. So the one I'm thinking about is the Concord Market, because it seems that they came in to reorganize just for this reason, if I'm thinking about it right, that downstairs they have the store, and then upstairs they wanted to have functions with one-day liquor licenses. Is that, is that right? So, those are two separate parts of it though, the first floor and the second floor. So it would, would your amendment allow that, or it wouldn't? That's... I don't know if this question's making sense.
I'm trying to remember the specific restrictions on that...
Me too.
Conversation, because there were, there was a lot of discussion about what the restrictions were.
Yeah, that's a good...
And...
So you might not know the answer to it, but I have to say I'm confused about, about that situation right now.
All right, well, let's, we get the facts.
It's a good thing to...
I think when, I think when you were mentioning this to me, it was, it was aimed at a place that had a license to sell and said, oh, boy, now we can get into this kind of business.
Now we can be a bar too.
Now we can be a...
Right.
Whatever. As opposed to somebody whose general business plan was to already do that kind of thing. So, but let's get the facts of what we can do there. So we've got that amendment that we'll, we'll, we'll get some language for it and check it out. So the sense of the committee is that if we can resolve these things, you would support going forward with a warrant article.
Definitely.
Can I just ask, the, the, there's only one page to this, correct?
Yes, so far.
So far, right. So, do we know what else was contained, or it just wasn't germane to us, or...
Well, this was it.
Because there's a section two, and then I don't...
Section two ends it, it says this X takes a place upon its passage.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, yeah.
If it's passed on Tuesday, it's, it's not a six-month wait or something.
I just want to make sure we weren't missing other...
The attorneys may say, no, you've got to add some stuff to this.
Sure, sure.
I don't know. All right, so what I will do then is I'll get some language reflecting your proposal.
Okay.
We'll, we'll get some resolution of the matter that Terry had raised. I'll make sure on our behalf that the Business Partnership and the Chamber of Commerce know about this. And would it be also okay if I tried to write a little note to the Concord Journal that we're thinking about this? And if anybody's interested or has questions, please be in touch with us. I don't see how it could hurt.
I think we could pitch the story to them.
Yeah.
Maybe set for an interview or something like that.
Okay, is that okay with everybody?
I think also if it's a town meeting article, it will end up getting publicity just because of that anyway.
Oh, yeah, but we want to, we want to, you know, try to have as many of our ducks lined up...
That's right.
When we get it squared away, so getting the language clean, making sure we, when somebody says, well, have you, you know, have you tried to find out who else might be interested? We can say this is what we've done, and we found this... All right?
So when we get to this final thing, it will say what organizations were included.
Yes, when we go, if, if we go forward with this and we go to town meeting, it will say in the first paragraph to section twelve of said chapter one thirty-eight, two, and it'll lay out who we are requesting to be able to issue these special licenses to. It'll say that. And what I, what I have already told the people I've spoken to about this is that if we decide we're going to do this, then we'll want a letter from them requesting that they be included in this, so that'd be part of our package. Thank you all very much. Committee Liaison Reports. Susan?
It was a pretty light week. I went to the Historical Commission on the tenth, and they spoke about updating the demolition delay bylaw. They had been given three review applications that they were going to do site visits on. They also discussed, there was an open meeting law complaint, and they, the committee discussed the review and decided, and ruled that nothing in the complaint was specific to open meeting law. It was other comments, but, so the committee felt there was no basis to the complaint. Let's see, then, Concord Can, Brian Folds did a very nice presentation on sustainability. And then I joined all the rest of us, we were all at the two-two-two-nine Main Street Forum, the five P M. session last week, which was very informative and interesting.
The Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee has officially launched. They expect to bring beyond, they've, they've got a very tight schedule, but there's a lot of depth on that committee and also previous bylaws from other towns for Affordable Housing Trust. So they expect to be, come to the committee, they don't know yet on the, until December sixteenth, that they will be given a date to come back to the Select Board on the sixteenth. And, but it is clearly in their schedule to have that bylaw drafted for our review and to be able to go to town meeting.
This is, just to context, this is one of the warrant articles associated with affordable housing. In addition to the property transfer and the building permit, we set up this trust committee that would be the recipient of essentially the funds that were coming through.
And then I've, we've all, I think almost all of us, if not all of us, were at the recent NMI StarMet Public Forum, and there was a fair amount of participation in that forum. And they are, the two-two-nine committee, as a follow-up, is meeting on November fifth, because the thirty-day appeal process for the consent decree is currently underway. And so if people were not at that meeting, they're encouraged to either get comments to two-two-nine Main Street that's going to be looking at that decree and putting together a whole list of comments.
We're going to be collecting those comments, and the town, the town will submit a formal comment, even if it is no comment, but we'll make sure we put something in for the record.
So the committee will give their remarks to the town.
To the town.
On behalf of the town.
Okay, good, okay. So if you can't attend that meeting on the fifth, be sure to get your comments to the two-two-nine committee.
I was just going to also, I think we're challenging the town a little bit with the two, two-two, two-two-two-nines StarMet committees. Two-two-two, the too many, no.
In the reuse.
And I know at, at other, other committee meetings that I, I attended, because if you look, if you look on our boards and committees for two-two-two-nine, you might miss the other committee. I think we have to figure out some way to make sure that these are explained in, in some kind of a...
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's a good point, and I'm wondering if on the website, even for the committee listing, each one could reference the other related committee in this case?
Yeah.
You know, with just an additional...
Because they're, they're interlocking it, you know, last week.
Jeremy?
Okay, well, I, last Tuesday, I attended the Multitown Gas Leaks Initiative meeting in Arlington, which was facilitated by M A P C. With intro and remarks from mothers out front. It was a very informative meeting where I think there was representation from all sixteen towns and updates from a handful who were, who were dealing specifically with different complaints. On the, on the one hand, it was a very specific meeting because National Grid was in attendance. So Marcy Reed, for those of you who don't know, is the CEO of National Grid Massachusetts, and she lives in Concord. So we're lucky to have her right here. She was there with her gas team, and there was a lot of in-depth engagement around, you know, the steps between finding a gas leak and the process to fixing a gas leak. It's not overnight, as we all know. There was, and so there were three breakout sessions with National Grid. One was on communication, one was on coordination, the other one was on data sharing. I attended the data sharing, which was really more of a, we know that National Grid has a live map that shows their leaks. The question is, how can we get access to that, and how can it serve all the towns that are concerned? It should be more, it, they were very open about the, the technological challenges that they face trying to update all of the different information systems as the company itself wrestles with some of these. But it was a good step, and there will be further meetings beyond this. Then I attended the, the Climate Action Advisory Board that night after our executive session. And we discussed, or the, the committee discussed the upcoming Sustainable Concord Open House. And, you know, the public engagement session, which will be on November seventh. So that should be on people's calendars if they're interested. It'll be at the high school, and there was robust discussion on how to, how to mimic previous successful events. And then they, and at one of the board members' suggestion, they had invited Harvey Michaels from M I T. to lead a climate discussion. Harvey is renowned in energy circles and went into fairly great detail about buildings and about, if the, if the grid is getting to a certain place, we have to focus to get to a climate, to get to a level that reflects our climate goals, we have to tackle transportation and buildings. And he, I will, I will have those slides posted as soon as they become available. But it was a really, a very interesting conversation. His background is in energy efficiency, so that's, you know, and I think it's always helpful to have a, a presentation from somebody who looks to mine our, our megawatts first in the way we approach things. Happy to talk about anybody, to anybody about this in greater depth. I don't want to take up this meeting with that. But look at the minutes from the meeting. And then at last Wednesday's Board of Health meeting, the board discussed revising its existing regulations restricting the sale of vaping and tobacco products in Concord. The regulation is being worked on with Town Council and will be a start of a public input process beginning next month. The anticipation is there'll be meetings in November and December. It's unlikely that anything will be passed by the board until after the new year. Since last, since that last week's meeting, the Board of Health has also had a public, a public records request from Fletcher Tilton. It's a law firm representing the Coalition for Responsible Retailing. Fletcher Tilton also attended the Board of Health meeting, and Town Council is aware of this request and is advising Susan Rask on that. So, and then the Historic Districts Commission, I also, I had, I, sometimes there are conflicts, we all, we all wrestle with them. I did not attend the N R C. I did attend the H D C. the next night, which was, had a sort of last-minute change, and the, a further discussion of the museum did not take place. So there was a great deliberation over the appropriate signage for inside Concord Center with various retailers.
Okay, I attended the Library Committee, and as Stephen already said, they talked about the great increase in circulation. They've also just launched the public phase of the capital campaign for the library expansion. And then I attended, asked it some other people, the Concord Carlisle Community Chest Women in Philanthropy Luncheon. That was really eye-opening, and I thought all the speakers were really good, but our social worker, her, her real title is Concord Community Services Coordinator, Bonnie Wilber, she had some really interesting statistics that I didn't know about, and how much of a hidden need we have, invisible needs of single mothers, low-income people, domestic violence, and like a thirteen percent increase in mental illness has been reported at the, at the Elliott Center in, in Emerson Hospital this year. So also the startling statistic that we had over one hundred thousand Uber and Lyft rides going in or out of Concord in two thousand eighteen. That is a huge number, and really, a hundred thousand Uber or Lyft rides.
For every resident, every man, woman, and child.
I know, it's crazy, so...
There you have our transportation challenge right there.
Exactly. So it's a really good luncheon and a lot of interesting ideas. I also attended the two-two-two-nine workshop, which was excellent. And the Capital Planning Task Force should be launching really soon. We're appointing or nominating some more people tonight. So I anticipate the first meeting will be in early or mid-November, and it'll have a six-month timeframe taking us past town meeting, I guess, into May, unless they are very fast. So we may need to get those dates of the charge extended, but we'll figure that out.
Okay. All right, very quickly, I attended Depollinator Health Advisory Committee. They're doing two things of note. One, they're embarked on a, a communication program to talk with various suppliers of plants in and around the area here to see if they will identify themselves as not using neonicotinoids on their plants, so that people would know this is free of that particular pesticide. And then they are contemplating whether they want to come to town meeting with a warrant article that would essentially have to do with leasing of additional town land. That if the town went to lease any additional land, there would be a clause in there of some kind that said, no, neonicotinoids can be used on that. And they're still debating that, and I don't know what, how they will come down exactly on that. Like the rest of you, I attended the two-two-two-nine one again. I thought that was very interesting. I'm hoping that the report will get to us as soon as possible. This is a committee that we created, so it gets to us so that we can begin whatever next phase it will be. I also met with Hugh Garfield Trust, following up on Terry's remarks about folks in need around town. I think Jeremy, it was your first meeting at that, so that was really pretty good. A terrific committee, always doing a lot of good work for the folks in town. Mr. Crane and I both attended the ribbon cutting for the Concord Museum. Stephen spoke well on behalf of us, along with our representative and our state senator. It was a very nice event. And last, it's not a liaison report, I'll just switch to miscellaneous correspondence, and it's not even that, but just to remind everybody that our annual educational program for committee members is going to be on November second here in the townhouse at nine o'clock. I think it'll be an informative morning. We'll have reversements at nine, the program will start at nine-thirty. I encourage all community members of committees and boards to attend, particularly those that...
And that'll be at C C H S?
No, no, here, in the townhouse.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I think we only did it at C C H S. the very first year. I think we've done it here most of the time, but it'll, it'll be good. Other than that, I have no additional correspondence, so we'll...
Can I just add one thing that I realized, because I, there will also be on, on November second, in, in coordination with the CAP Committee, will be the Free Ride and Drive E V. event, and that will be at the high school. And there are a phenomenal number of manufacturers that will be there, or, or dealers. So I know that the events, that the chair of the Climate Action Advisory Board, Brian Folds, was more than excited about the participation levels in this.
That's right, eleven to three is what it is at the high school. So if you want to go drive an electric car, there's your chance.
So come here first and then go there.
Committee nominee?
Is it the second or the seventh?
Second.
Second.
I just wanted to make a remark before you did nominations, and it's relating to our earlier discussion about having people on committees who are not residents, but, but possess a specific skill set that can be valuable to the committee working. And included in the list tonight, Deborah Stark is being nominated to serve on the Economic Vitality Committee. She's been a, had a business... She's been a, had a business in Concord for a very long time and used to live here, but doesn't any longer. So that's just an example of, uh, what we spoke about earlier.
And she fills the role on, from the list of, of people who are managers of stores in town as opposed to owners of property.
Right.
Deborah's natural gourmet. We'll give her, give her a plug. So committee nominations.
I nominate Hugh Lauer of one hundred Kaiser Road and Elise Woodward of three seventy-nine Garfield Road to the Capitol Planning Task Force for a term to expire April seventh, twenty twenty. Cato Anderson of fourteen Park Lane, Mark Martinez of sixty-six Alfred Circle, Deborah Stark of ninety-eight Commonwealth Ave, John Boyton of seventy-two Chestnut Street, and Stephen Verrill of four fifteen Wheeler Road to the Economic Vitality Committee for a term to expire on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Also Cynthia Rainey, Edie Hunter's, uh, Ridge Road, uh, to the Capitol Planning Task Force as a school, school committee designee, uh, term to conclude April seventh, twenty twenty.
And committee appointments?
Committee appointments, Haley Overdahl of seventy-six Upland Road to the Planning Board for a term to expire May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Todd Benjamin of three thirty-three Sudbury Road, Lori Hunter, Superintendent of Schools per committee charge, and Jared Stanton, Director of Finance at Con- Con- Concord Public Schools, also per committee charge to the Capitol Planning Task Force for a term to expire April seventh, twenty twenty. Virginia Denny McIntyre of twenty-six Simon Willard Road to the Tax Relief Committee for a term to expire May thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Your second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town manager appointment with Select Board approval.
Tori Lambert of one forty-nine College Road to the Board of Assessors for a term to expire May thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Bill Camasa of twenty-eight Davis Court to the Trails Committee.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, is there any public comments? Seeing no one rise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.